We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed in our community. Thank you. Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle, here. Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 194 of 2023.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second to take from the table Resolution Number 194, 2023. This piece of legislation is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. This is an eating place liquor license transfer for Green Ridge News. On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Spencer with the read in the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation reports received February 13th, 2023. 3B, minutes of the city planning commission meeting held on December 7th, 2022. 3C, emergency declaration from the administration received on February 14th, 2023. 3D, minutes of the Scranton firefighters pension commission meeting held January 18th, 2023. 3E, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held on January 18th, 2023. 3F, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held on February 15th, 2023. 3G, minutes of the Scranton police pension commission meeting held January 18th, 2023. 3H, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held January 18th, 2023. 3I, correspondence dated February 15th, 2023, from the business administration regarding a budget transfer. 3J, controllers report for the month ending January 31st, 2023. 3K, correspondence received February 14th, 2023, from OECD regarding January open gov report.
Is there a 3L as well? Did he just read that one?
Not sure. Frank, did you read item 3L?
Did you read 3L or?
3L, correspondence received February 16th, 2023, from OECD regarding code enforcement report for city council.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
Yes, I have three comments on third order items. 3C, we have emergency declaration from the administration for the demo of 1007 Quincy Ave. Frank, could we reach out and get the total price of that demo plus the contract for the demo in regard to item 3C?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you. In regard to item 3J, I did take a look at the controllers report. For some reason, I missed that. It was on the agenda today. I thought it was going to be on next week, but could we also reach out to the administration and see what the list of the mayor's dues and subscriptions are for item 3J? And then for item 3L, there was an address I put in, 1102 and 1104 Dartmouth Street. I put this in a couple of weeks ago. We did get a response back that they, I think code enforcement was working with the SPD on this address. There really doesn't seem to be too much of an update, so could you just check to see if there's an update on 1102, 1104 Dartmouth Street, please?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments on third order items? If not received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have two quick ones. So this Sunday, February 26th, the South Scranton Neighborhood Association will be at the North Scranton VFW on Rockwell Avenue from 1 until 3:30 for hometown hero banner sign up for the North Scranton Initiative. I would like to applaud Mr. Bob Gattens and Tom Patterson and crew and team that actually started this in South Scranton, the hometown heroes banner program. They did Manuka, they did East Mountain, they helped with the Hill, and now they're helping out North Scranton, so they've done a fantastic job and I just wanted to make mention of that. And then my second one, both of these are on my phone, so give me a sec here. So also up in that neck of the woods on Sunday, from 6, it starts at 6:00 PM, the door is open at 5:00. It's the Holy Rosary Center Basketball League fundraising event. It's the Scranton Police versus the Scranton Fire Department. Presale game tickets will be available on Thursday, February 23rd, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Holy Rosary. Adults are $5, students are $2. Game tickets available on Friday between 6:00 and 7:30 PM. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. I'd also like to announce, I know there's been quite a bit of interest, the Scranton Planning Commission will meet tomorrow evening for a work session at 5:30 and the planning commission meeting that begins at 6:00 PM where they'll be looking to vote on the zoning ordinance.
I had an announcement to add. Councilman Smearle and myself yesterday morning went over to the Enterprise Center on Lackawanna Avenue, the Chamber of Commerce Center on the second floor there. They have, I believe it's 14 spaces, office spaces, and they've got various businesses and entrepreneurs that are there, and we had the opportunity to meet with a number of them, and it was really great to see these businesses that are, that are here and these startups, and I think that there's a lot going for us as a city and to see these people here that many of them came from out of town, aren't from Scranton, some are, but there were certainly ones that were from, from other areas and decided to bring their business and their ideas to our city. And so it was really great to, to see the work that they're doing firsthand and to meet those people, and I'm sure Councilman Smearle felt, felt the same. We received a lot of information from, from the chamber about it, so I'd definitely be looking forward to seeing what, what more they continue to do.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anyone else?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
First speaker is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Thanks. Love pop quizzes.
Is it open book?
Yeah, yeah, it's a book sale.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton. First thing I would like to address is the Friends of the Scranton Public Library are having their quarterly book sale starting next Monday, February 27th, and running through Sunday, March 5th. It'll be on the second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown Mall, right in front of Crunch Gym. This is a real good deal. You can get children's books, adult books, young adult books, CDs, DVDs, audiobooks, all $1 to $2. This includes hardcover nonfiction books that might run $50 or $60. You can get them for two. In this day of inflation, I mean, what would you rather have, three hardcover books or a dozen eggs? So this is a great thing. The profits that the Friends make on these book sales go for children's programming at the children's library up the street. And I remind everybody, if you have children or grandchildren or nieces or nephews or neighbors, you know what it costs to get a library card? Nothing. It's a service we offer to the community, so if you get a chance, come over next week. It's, it's a great deal. You won't find a better deal anywhere in town. Now, where do we stand on the audit for 2021?
I did get an email. Mr. Voldeberg followed up with Kohansky and Company, and they stated that Matt Domodus advised the BA's office and the HR department to follow up with the actuary, foster and foster regarding the GASB 75 report. That's the only thing I have there is that they followed up with it. And from the auditor, they said they should have the Scranton Sewer Authority audit in today or tomorrow. That was on Thursday, so last Thursday or Friday, they're saying they should have got the sewer authority audit, and they're just waiting on the OPEP report from the actuary, and they should be wrapped up in a few weeks, is what the email says.
For those who don't know what GASB 75 is, that's the Government Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 75, which took effect in 2018, sometime ago, and it has to do with other post-employment benefits, retirees' health insurance and life insurance for retirees and their spouses. Now, since this has been in effect since 2018, they should have broken the code by now. They should have figured out a way to get this done in a more timely manner. I understand the sewer authority, you know, they aren't answerable to the city anymore, so they'll take their own sweet time, but GASB 75 should not be an obstacle, and they should be able to get this done, especially with Rainey and Rainey holding their hands. How are we doing on the negotiations, the arbitration for the police and firefighters' contracts?
Progress.
Okie dokie. It's only been 417 days since their contracts ended. I, I find it very interesting that we are having the planning mission for, for the zoning ordinance tomorrow. Do you have a sense of when the zoning ordinance will be put to bed? I mean, how much longer is that, that going to drag on? Does anybody know?
A rough timeline would have it up for a final vote here by probably mid to late April.
Okay. Also with the audit, I haven't seen legislation come forward for the new auditor, Clifford, Lawson, and Allen, but they're already starting late because you don't have the 2021 audit done. Did Kohansky give a projected date when they're going to have a draft ready? No projected date?
No projected date.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, it was due on September 3rd. Has the mayor said anything about the penalty clause, about getting our 10% clawback?
Not, not since I spoke to her last week.
Well, if she says no, I would like to know her reasoning, because it is taxpayer money, and in four years in a row, they've not managed to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Lee Morgan?
Good evening, council. The first thing I have here to say is, you know, I'd like to speak to the residents of the city for a couple of minutes here. You know, election time is coming, and we really need to do something about the candidates that we have that are running for office, and we need new candidates to come forward who have never run before, who may have some new ideas and bring something to the table. I'm really troubled by people who were previously elected for a position and then run for another position, and they did such a terrible job in office that it was a detriment to the residents. And from lack of another candidate, they get elected, and the damage they do continues on and on. I really think there needs to be a review of Act 47 in regards to the city and why it went into Act 47, and what the landscape of the city looked like when it went into Act 47, and what the landscape of the city looked like when it came out of Act 47. Because in my own personal opinion, I think the city of Scranton came out of Act 47 much worse than it went in. And in my opinion, I don't think there was any reason to have ever gone into Act 47, and I think we should know what the Pennsylvania Economy League was paid by the city of Scranton or the government in any fashion to do the work it did here. Now, my issue with ECTV hasn't been resolved yet, and it may take a little while, but you know, I'm really concerned when a community has a government TV channel. I think Joseph Goebbels would love something along that format, when the government preaches to its citizens on its own stage and lacks, and lacks the ability to allow, allow any dissent anywhere. And when you look at the city of Scranton and you look at the neighborhoods and you see the despair and the neglect and the decay here, is it being driven by Scranton's own government? Is that what's destroying the city, the people we elect? I mean, that's something to really look at and look at very hard. I think that the residents have made a lot of mistakes, and I think the federal government has made many more, and I'd like to highlight that by the train accident in Ohio. Now, I worked with a lot of toxic chemicals at one time as a spray painter, and I was breathing fresh air from outside, but the plant I was working in, the employees didn't have that opportunity, so a vast majority of them came down with chemically induced asthma because they were breathing chemicals in the air. Now, we have a president of the United States who many say can't do his job because of his mental state, and they say the same thing about the person we just elected as a senator in Pennsylvania, and he's in a, in a hospital with depression. And you know, when you have a secretary of transportation who doesn't come to where the accident is, and you've got people sick and a massive spill and animals dying on the ground, and people suffering with headaches, and then you have two governors, one in Ohio and one in Pennsylvania, discussing the situation, and they're going to decide that they're going to burn these chemicals and release them into the atmosphere, and don't go to the federal agency that has the ability to make a smart and rational decision on that. Just do it as a governor. And then what you do is create just a place that's so toxic that I think in the next 10 or 15 years, these people are going to die in massive numbers from the amount of toxins they've breathed in because politics was in play. And don't forget the play, the, the government in play during 9/11, when all the firemen went there to fight a fire, and they thought they were fine, and then they all died of cancers and various illnesses, and then the federal government didn't want to pay them. But you know, the one thing I'm worried about is where we're going as a city, and like I said, I haven't been to the courthouse yet with ECTV, and I don't know where that's going because I haven't had, I took this Monday off to do research at the Law Library in Wilkes-Barre because Scranton doesn't have one. And I really feel sorry for the residents, okay, on the state of affairs of the city, and the only ones that can change that is you, the residents, and you need new candidates for public office who understand what the role of a public official is. It's to serve the public, and to ask for audits for decades, that's only one issue, but there's a host. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I guess my first thing that I'm concerned about is the sound system here. I don't know how far along that's going. Can we expect something soon? And the reason I say that, I came in late for the NDC presentation, which is always a hot button of mine, and I like to hear everything that they have to say, but of course with the gentleman's back to me, I couldn't hear everything. I looked at the slide that he had up on the screen, and that was small, and I couldn't read that, all of it, and maybe that's my eyesight, but it just seems like it could be a better presentation as far as the sound system and the slides that are shown to the public. I'm concerned and have been concerned about the parking downtown. I have gotten several tickets downtown, and then I realized I had to register a credit card. I guess that was best, my debit card. And I registered, I call it my fun debit card, because I wouldn't put my one that I live up, live on, on a public system like that. But I did register my debit card, and it does work. You know, I, I register that, and when I'm downtown, it does work. It's a good feature. However, as, as Mr. King stated, so often those kiosses are not working, and you can never, you have to walk a couple of kiosses, and I know they say, well, just go across the street to get a kiosk. That works, and so I was glad that he mentioned that tonight about the condition of the kiosses. Now, I could not hear his response as to what his response was to Mr. King's concern about the condition of the kiosses, but I hope it was that they could get them up and running a little quicker rather than having us walk across the street, especially on Washington Avenue. Traffic is pretty heavy down.
I think that's what he said.
Is that, is that what he said?
But he's going to check out to see how long it takes them typically when one goes down.
Okay, so that was my one concern, because I do use it a lot on Washington Avenue. And then my other concern was, how do they decide where they put the kiosses? Is it a matter of just a revenue thing, where they can just fill their pockets with money? Because when I see them up around the hospitals at the Moses Taylor, and my mind says Mercy, but it's not the Mercy, it's Regional, and you know, the one up on Popeck's Avenue and all, and I, I think it's just such a shame that, boy, they've got those kiosses in there for people to put in for parking. And you know, I've seen the people drive around and put the tickets on the cars, which seems so self-serving for the, for the parking, because they're getting money out of, no concern about the, whatever it is that the person's going through that had to park their car there and didn't get back out to put money in it. So it just seems that there should be some kind of leeway, some kind of grace period, some, something around those kinds of buildings. And I also wondered, as he was showing the slides and the money that came in from the credit cards and the coins, just how much money of that is coming from the businesses? Is there any breakdown as to where does that money come from? Is it most heavy in the cities? Is it most heavy around the hospitals? Where is it coming from? I know that the total figure was there, but it made me think, where are they getting that money from? And you know, I enjoy their presentation, and I was glad I was able to participate and hear part of it, from what I could hear from the gentleman from the back, but I'll have to listen on ECTV and pick up the rest of it. So I'm hoping you'll have a, a good report for us soon on the sound system in here that we can all hear what's going on as the presentations are made. Okay, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Volenberg, can you reach out to ECTV, and maybe I'll reach out to the mayor too, and just see what we need to do to expedite getting this sound system updated?
I will, Mr. King. They have an auxiliary speaker set to go up halfway down the wall in the near future.
They do, okay. Well, apparently they're not working, because if the citizens here are struggling to still hear, we're going to have to try to see what we could do to improve that, so we'll continue to make that a priority and try to get that fixed for all of you. That exhaust, the sign and sheet. Is there anyone else like to be heard?
Members of council, Tom Coyne-Manuka. I'm going to throw a few quick things out there in reference to meter parking. Two weeks ago, I actually went to the courthouse to look up some information right across from the post office, and I had to go shopping for kiosks because I was only going to be in there for a few minutes, so I pulled out two quarters so I could dart in, dart right back out. First kiosk I went to was not accepting coins. Did the whole process, when to put it in? No good. Went across the street, same exact thing. Had to walk down the street and around the corner to actually find one that was accepting coins. I asked the gentleman from the Parking Authority, the Parking Group, before he left, "I understand that some of these kiosks are electronic, and if they go completely down, they can send a signal to basically tell them that they're down because they're not pinging. If they're partially down, not accepting coins or something like that, is there any mechanism in place so that they actually call a service, call a service call because it's partially down?" He said, "Well, I can get the app." "Well, of course I can get the app, but I don't like the tracking. I don't want to put my credit card on there, and it's not something that I consider a priority. If I'm going to be there for longer than a short period of time, I have feet. I'll park outside the city and I'll walk in because it's better for my health." So I asked him that, and of course, he said he'd look into it. Last week, when leaving council, we got a firsthand experience of a handicapped issue in this building. Me and Mr. Schuster were leaving by the back, and we went to hit the handicap button for opening the door to exit. Excuse me. After trying it a few times, we figured out is that the handicap button for exiting the building is tied in with the security's locking system. So once that door in the back gets locked where there's a key card necessary for it, it seems that the button to open the door from the inside no longer works. So if you're handicapped in the building, you're slower leaving the building, and there's no one down there, congratulations, you can press it as much as you want. That door will not operate because it's been turned off by the door security. You can open it once you use a key card on the main door on the outside, but other than that, you can't get out if you're handicapped. Whoever did that, good job testing. Planning Commission for tomorrow. It's very nice that on the WebCity's website, it notes that the planning commission meets on the fourth, fourth Thursday of every month. This month, as it's been noted, the fourth Thursday of every month is occurring on Wednesday. So whoever maintains this, if they've changed the dates to Wednesday, we really shouldn't be advertising that the meetings are on Thursday, but Thursday comes on Wednesday. For the planning commission, for the planning commission, they're also having something on their agenda for the, for finances. Thankfully, none of us get to see it because they don't actually publish any information. They just put the agenda up there without any detail. Last, I'd like to make a statement that we are almost at a year that Ukraine has been fighting against Russia. At this, as of this point, 1,004, 144,440 Russian soldiers have been killed in the conflict. By estimates, probably about a third of Ukrainian forces have also suffered those losses. So we're looking at this point somewhere around a 200,000 to 225,000 total lives lost in this year. To put that in context, we're looking at three times the volume of every man, woman, and child in the city of Scranton being killed. It's a hard battle, and as we look forward, it's important to understand that our funding going forward... it's important to understand that our funding going forward to Ukraine is critical. And for those who oppose it, because they don't think we should be invested in there, to back out at this point is to say that if someone stands up, and they hate China, if someone stands up for long enough against the US, the resolve will break, and they'll back out. So backing out at this time only goes forward to reinforce to China that if they stand up against our resolve, eventually we'll back down. God bless Ukraine.
Thank you, Mr. Coy. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Good evening, Council, Dave Dodson, resident of Scranton, citizen, whatever. My favorite issue, tax exempt. We're at 38%. We've announced a tax increase for this year on property. And it's directly related to recent properties going off the tax roll. And I wish it could happen that tax exempts could team up with the city and petition the state to replace some of this money. Because I don't see any way forward for much of anything if we keep going. And we're probably going to be 40% or maybe by now. And it just keeps getting larger and larger and falling on fewer and fewer people. We have manufacturing plants. There's a quarter of a billion dollars going to be invested in general dynamics. And the output for artillery shells will be 400%. Those are good things if they're going to Ukraine, because I'd like to see a few of them land on the Russians myself. I'm sick and tired of seeing this women in labor being blown to bits and hospitals and schools and you name it. I just seen a picture of a whole family, a mother and her family was just wiped out laying along the roadside. And it was pretty much a direct malicious attack. So please support Ukraine people out there. It'll just get worse if old Putin gets his way. Apartments downtown. I said last week, and we should encourage that these landlords actually have Parking Authority space for their tenants. Once again, Friday night, I went to my favorite pizza shop and rode around the block, and then took a space where I'm carrying a pizza across Lackawanna Avenue. And it's just not viable. And with this weather, the further you carry it, the colder it gets. So we're actually parking businesses out of their business, you know? It's, and the school taxes are going up again. And I never seen a financial advisor to the city or the school that didn't absolutely love another tax increase. Even though the lawsuits, I've read some articles on it. And it happens in other states, it happens in our state. And the people that commented on it said, don't hold your breath for anything to improve. So a lot of these state legislatures, they just stung their nose at it. And yeah, okay, we don't have to deal with it. There's no penalty for a court decision, in that case mostly. If the judge tells you to clean up your property, and you're a private citizen possibly. But, you know, it just goes on and on and on, where schools are underfunded. General, Governor Brownback in Canada canceled a lot of taxes in, or not Canada, Kansas. And they actually had to leave school out in March. This was a few years ago, but this is how critical taxes are. And finally, I'm real tired of hearing about problems created by the withdrawn, job-killing federal regulations. And then people coming in here and blaming the Democrats for all the problems. That railroad had, the regulations were revoked by the Trump administration. And that train was on fire 10, 20 miles almost down the line. So what's wrong with the camera? I've seen it on camera. Why can't the railroad see it on camera?
Thank you, Mr. Dodson.
There's 100 cars with a liquefaction plant out in Bradford County.
Okay.
And it's gonna be rolling through our city with Norfolk Southern. Get ready, people.
Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Sure. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard?
Good evening. Again, I urge council to investigate some source for property owners like myself to convey factual information of their immediate neighborhoods to the personnel that will be doing the reassessments. They're, they're only looking for positives. I forgot what year it was when Mr. Cordero was in. The lady came to my house, and I talked to her. My house was reassessed then, must be like 10 years ago, whenever it was. These people, there's, there's no way for me to convey to them how my immediate neighborhood has declined because of really just two households that just been there for months. They have destroyed my neighborhood with the way their property. They have nothing to lose, they don't have nothing invested, like my street has in the past. These people have created poverty. You know, I got this slumlord next door. He could care less, he'll milk that house dry. And then the people across the street, they have destroyed a beautiful piece of property, and they're still parking there, it belongs to the city. It's just impossible to tell who's ever gonna reassess my house, how bad things are, because of, like I said a couple of weeks ago, my house values will go up, the insurance will go up when the reassessment comes. And that's just a phony, like a used car lot man telling you what your property is worth. This is nothing but a fraudulent reassessment dribble. It's a shame what you people are allowing to happen to the taxpayers of this city. All I can suggest, if you can afford it, is get a lawyer like WNEP and hope for the best. They got thousands and tens of thousands off their taxes. It was, it's a shame that the city allowed something like that. Plus the other two companies that were given deductions. You know, you make heroes out of the developers. They work on taxes and tax deductions. Given the museum was great to me, but it's not like it's costing anything. They're probably charging off more on their taxes than they could rent the stores for. Real quick, I wanna tell you something. Sunday, I was taking Rosie to church about 9:30, just down North Main Avenue. And all of a sudden, two or three cars come at me like a muddling of traffic. They were passing four or five or six people jogging, young people. Now, why were the joggers in the street? Because there was a half dozen vehicles on the sidewalk, and they couldn't use it. Now, why are the half dozen vehicles on the sidewalk? It's because people are renting rooms out to these transits. That's what's destroying this whole city wherever you go. There shouldn't be a vehicle allowed on a sidewalk anywhere, they're for pedestrians. I walk every day four or five times with my puppy. It's impossible. The same people parked there, like I said, on 57 Parker Street. But they have quit. I don't know if they moved out or what happened. But you're just waiting for someone to get run over with, unless you start enforcing a code that's on the books about parking on the sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Hello, I'm Eli Bochuk from Leslie Drive, once again. And I just, just over a month ago, I requested that the Leslie Drive street sign be replaced. And they did it today. And I would just like to thank you guys and DPW, it's very nice. And all of Oakmont and East Mountain is happy to have a sign once again. We are very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you very much for reporting that to us. That's great.
Good evening. I think one of the things that might help in us hearing back there would be maybe to invest in a higher-quality microphone for this table of the same quality of this, maybe, and maybe one at each end.
Mrs. Schumacher, can, can you hear us better when we're up here, in other words?
Oh, yeah.
You can, okay. But it's during those carcasses that you can hear, okay.
Right.
All right.
Although up here, some of you have a tendency like to look at, over here, to that side, or not be very close to the microphone. And, and it would help if you guys were closer to your microphones too, I think, when you speak. And, you know, not put your hands in front of you, between you and the microphone.
I do think if we get the type of speaker that Frank is talking about, that's facing the crowd, it's gonna be a whole different ballgame. Because right now, basically like a musician on a stage, we have monitors that we could hear ourselves. So sometimes we might even tone down our voices, because we hear ourselves too loud, which will bring it down to the crowd as well. So if we have some speakers that are facing the crowd, it should be a big difference.
Okay, and when's that gonna happen?
Well, hopefully soon.
Okay, after the audit. Okay, on to the agenda. I am definitely in favor of 7A. The only way I would change that would be to make it a, more than a five-year term, because Mr. Gatton and his committee do a really good job up there. And now, back to, reading my handwriting, 5B. This is the appointment of someone who resides in the city, but we're not allowed to know where that is, I guess, to the position of Director of... Yeah, well, I don't know what that was for, but anyway. Effective February 6, 2023. Why bother? I mean, that was the beginning of this month. Why not before? I mean, what's the point in voting after it's been done and the person's been at work for almost a month? I, I just wonder, do you know, has he, has he stopped the DPW workers from picking up the recyclables in the blue, in the blue bag? Somebody was here at this podium and showing how they're going to people who, commercial businesses that are supposed to be getting their own private pickups?
They have, they have stopped picking up all business recyclables.
Are you sure about that?
Yes.
I don't really think that's true, but I'm...
Well, they were told to. I was, I was with Mr. Petrofis today up at Naug Park, and we discussed it. And he said they have, they were all told to stop picking up business recyclables.
Well, okay. I don't believe that's happening, though. He might wanna go out and follow them someday. Okay, and 5E. Isn't this building a private building? Why? Why are we paying for this, if it's a private building?
I don't believe that we are paying. I think that they've applied for ARACP, and this is just kind of like a pass-through. They have to, if they are successful, they'll have to match that amount.
Correct, yeah, we're just a conduit for, for these grants. And it doesn't just have to be nonprofit entities that apply for these grants.
Okay, if I may have just a couple more seconds. I would like to ask you people, you know how long it's taking to get the rights of way from the sewer authority? And that Meadowbrook has 48, as I said, rights of way that need to be sought. And I would think you might wanna start having a periodic report from our legal department and not wait until the last minute to see how many they're working off.
Okay, we'll check on that. Thanks, Mrs. Schumacher.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Hello, Delmarzovic, Scranton City taxpayer. We've been hearing a lot tonight about parking issues, not being able to pay for parking, not being able to find parking, parking on the sidewalk. And I think it's worth considering why it is that parking is such an issue. And the easy solution to that is everybody in the city, or almost everybody in the city, is required to own a car. There is no adequate public transit in the city of Scranton. Colts does exist, which is better than many other places can say. But Colts doesn't cut it, especially not for the city itself. The, last I checked, the last bus out of the city left at 5:15, only 15 minutes after normal business hours. And it's not doing a good job of transporting our citizens where they need to go. This is why our streets are constantly filled with cars. But on top of that, there's plenty of parking in the downtown. I can think of at least five parking lots that I've never seen above one-quarter capacity. So we've dedicated all this space to cars, we've dedicated all of this traffic to the city. We've destroyed our public transit networks. And what has it gotten us? And what has it gotten us? Empty blocks that aren't used, that aren't taxable, that don't bring revenue, that don't benefit the citizen, people spending huge amounts of their income on automotive. And of course, this all started way back in the 50s. So it's about time that we try rectifying that. And the first step is to revisit something that had been discussed quite actively a few years ago, and merging Colts and the LCTA. The Lackawanna County, or County Lackawanna Transit Authority and the Loseran County Transit Authority have no reason to be two individual organizations. They hardly cross paths. It's incredibly inefficient. The bus shuffle to get from here to Wilkes-Barre or back is nonsensical. Having one single transit authority for the Wyoming Valley not only makes sense in terms of finances, but also will adequately, or start to adequately match the needs of the public. Most people trans, commute to work via personal vehicle. I believe it's up to 89% of people in Scranton. I think it's 86% in Wilkes-Barre. That's a lot of motor traffic that's destroying our roads that our communities now have to pay for. And the demand for parking has, again, leveled blocks of our city. I was at a lecture the other night on black neighborhoods in Scranton, and I noticed that a good majority of them were completely leveled to make room for wider alleys or parking lots that are entirely unnecessary. Scranton is historically the electric city, not the motor city. And even Detroit has better public transit than we do. So it's about time that we start really investing in our people and putting the citizen first and the car second, if not even lower on the list. There is inadequate housing in Scranton, but there's plenty of space with all these abandoned parking lots. Our community isn't thriving the way it could if we had adequate housing, if we dedicated all those lots to mixed-use properties, to have small businesses and give property ownership to citizens in, in the community. We're expecting the train from Scranton, I'm sorry, the train from New York to Scranton. And that's probably going to come with an influx of remote workers from New York who are going to come here and find that there isn't much in place to live. And there might be properties, but there isn't a place to live. There's not much to go to. There's not much to do. And we need to, we, we can fix that pretty easily by changing the way that we view our cities, view our communities, and our relationship to the actual physical space of the city of Scranton. Too much of it is dedicated to cars. Too little of it is dedicated to the people. And this leads us with, with poor, dying communities who are moving out, being pushed into financial ruin, as we've discussed previously, with the sheer expense of car ownership, maintenance, and fueling. And it leaves the city with huge swaths of land that don't draw in any revenue to reinvest into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Excuse me, Delmar.
Yes.
Can, can you please state your address for the record?
My address?
Yes.
That'd be 75 Laird Street, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, 18705.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rick Little from Scranton. I'd first like to commend, I hope I say his name right, John Belachia for...
Basaliga.
Pardon me?
Basaliga. John Basaliga?
Yes. The guy who runs the mall now, and he's a developer, and for moving, giving free space for the Civil War Museum, which is great, that was in this building that I saw years ago. But that's exemplary governance. I'd like to talk in broad strokes a little bit about a whole bunch of things. My experience, you know, one of the main reasons I moved to Scranton is because of my childhood being brought up in Wheaton, Illinois. Scranton is the county seat, and it's an, it was an all-American city in 1955. And Wheaton, Illinois, where I grew up in DuPage County, was also an American city in 1967, the year before I left there to move to Western New York where my parents were from. My dad was a city councilman in, in Wheaton, Illinois. I grew up on a street called Liberty Drive, and I'd ride my bike right down Liberty Drive and run right into the DuPage County courthouse. And so I, I've always been interested in government, you know, real government, not politics, but, but government, how it works and the branches. It just blows my mind how people think of Republican judges and Democrat judges, because that's totally against the whole idea of the judicial branch, the constitutional judicial branch, probably before 1871. But, you know, it, it's... I live in Scranton Housing Authority, and, and, and there's a lot of very bad treatment of the elderly. And I hear, hear people talking about, oh, let's save the planet, let's recycle. Well, half the population of downtown Scranton is the elderly. And, you know, a former mayor of Scranton, Mayor Durkin, who, who, who served from 1922 to 1926, he went on to be the head of Scranton Housing Authority for almost 50 years. And it, it was thought of as, as a place for the elderly. I never thought I'd become an elderly person, but I'm there. And it's horrible. It's, it's a fiefdom unto itself. They have a lease that's 30 years old that they keep pulling out. They, they don't even pull it out. They just mention it, you know, because I go to get my lease and they wouldn't give it to me because they have, they put these people in without last names. It's basically a fiefdom unto its own, without police protection, without proper fire protection, and most of all, without COVID, without code enforcement protection. In the big picture, this, there's a lot of COVID fraud. I also, you know, why, why don't we have the recycling in Scranton Housing Authority? That's, that's one idea, because that's most of the population. Why don't you make them recycle it? But, you know, this whole, after going through the whole COVID thing and these people bursting into my door and just spreading fear all the time with the police, because I, I realized, you know, their lawyer is the district attorney and he has, you know, he has the magistrate judge right in his pocket. I mean, everything is illegal. I learned about this because I, I spent many years in New York Family Court, and, you know, they're just, they destroyed my family. Haven't seen my kid since she was eight. She's 22 now. But, you know, this, there's COVID fraud. $360 billion, that's $35 million an hour for two years. We got to get to the bottom of how the government's working with the fraud, coming from the federal down to the county level. The county is the key to everything that you're going to see in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. First, we, we've been speaking about City Hall ADA compliance and handicap accessible and stuff, and the city had posted out front new handicap signs with, with some arrows and things on them. And I'd just like to remind you, the City Hall was placed on the Registry of Historic Places in 1981. So when we placed the signs out the front, I, I, I believe they really took, took away from the appearance of City Hall. So I, I've been speaking with members of the Architectural Heritage Association in Scranton. And I've received an offer from them to replace, pay for and replace all of the existing handicap signs around City Hall, just the City Hall building. They would all be ADA compliant, but they would be historically correct to the building. So you, you don't just have to have white and blue signs, you know, with handicap. You can, they can, they can look better to fit this building. So I want to know if the city will agree on having this done. So Frank, if you would ask Director Alessi if that would be his department and if he could help us with that, to see if that can be something that they would allow the Architectural Heritage Association to do at no cost to the city.
I'll do that, sir.
Thank you. The second thing is the recyclables. We, we a few weeks ago asked the DPW not to pick up recyclables for buildings. So since then, they were, most from what I've seen, they have ceased picking them up. I would like to know if it's possible for the DPW to continue picking the recyclables up, but at a cost to the businesses. And I would just say, take for instance, our garbage fee is $300, maybe a $300 fee to pick up recyclables. We have equipment, we have the people to do it. Our DPW is, is more than capable of doing this. This would bring in, if you multiply, if a thousand businesses did this and you multiply that by the $300, this would be income for the city. I was also told that our tonnage of our recyclables and stuff, that we receive a percentage of money towards that bag. I don't know what that all entails, but I, I will follow up on that. But it, it is some kind of a credit with that. So I would like to know if, Frank, if we would send this to the law department and get an opinion on it, because I'd, I'd really like to not downsize our DPW. And, and if we cease picking all this glass and stuff up, I, I certainly don't want to see it winding up in the woods or, or other places. But right now in the city of Scranton, there are no recyclable companies that I know of. So what are we going to do with this stuff? I'd rather see the money. I, I mean, if I had a business and I had recyclables and it was $300 a year and it was just simple for the city to come and, and continue picking the stuff up, I, I think that, that's one way of, of correcting them not paying for it. But I, I see no other way out. We can't just leave it go. Okay?
I'll reach out tomorrow, sir.
Thank you. And one more thing. I had sent a request into the administration to consider painting council chambers. If you look around at all the white dots, it's really not a good look for the, a city the size of Scranton, after you took all the pictures of the mayors down, to just have white dots all over the wall. So I, I sent a request in for that. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smurl. Mr. Schuster?
To follow up on Mr. Smurl's idea there, you know, I, I think it's a good thing that the city looks into the feasibility of what he was discussing with, with recycling. If we could also add to that, I, I did get a call from the Legion down in Manuka just to see what, you know, what their status would be as a, as the only legion in the city of Scranton. So if we could just add on to, to Mr. Smurl's request for the feasibility of that, what status the, the American Legion would have and how they can go about possibly getting their recyclables picked up.
I will, sir.
Other than that, I did want to ask about our pave cuts. Mr. Voldenberg, if you could reach out to the administration, DPW, whoever's handling the pave cuts at this point in time, are we currently billing the utility companies for our pave cuts? And then could we request the last six months, well, six months of billing, including January and up to this date in February of those pave cut billings? Also, it was raised in public comment tonight about the Meadowbrook project. Could we reach out to the law department to see where they're at with the securing of the rights of ways? There were 40 some, I'd say, high 30s into the 40s of how many rights of ways there were. I know that there was only one secured as of last year. So if we could see how many they've secured to date and where they are with that project. Moving into DPW, can we also reach out for an update on Rubicon? What are the savings to the city at this point in time? And have the routes for the refuse collection been solidified through the Rubicon system? Also, update on electric vehicles? And also an update on our six new refuse trucks, specifically the 11-yard truck? And if we've received our 520-yard trucks? But with the 11-yard truck, if we're using it for, for route pickup and how that's working out for us?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
Yes, a number of things I wanted to bring forward tonight. First of all, I know it was on our code enforcement report that we'd received, but the address of 417, 419 Harrison Avenue, that's been a persistent problem with them leaving their, their trash out for the majority of the week. And I know that they've received quality-of-life tickets. I'm, I'm uncertain if they've been paid or not, but I think there's renters there that aren't getting the hint, because I drove past tonight, as I normally do, going up Harrison Avenue, and, and they had their trash out already. Trash in the hill doesn't get picked up until Thursday morning, so that's, that's too far in advance. And not only are they putting it out, but they usually just have bags and maybe one container. And with the weather that we had earlier, that, that sudden storm, all the, the wind and, and rain and sleet, I'm sure that, that trash has, has gone all over the place and is no longer in those bags. So if we could, please revisit property and figure out a way to get them compliant with our garbage rules.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
And I received a complaint from someone regarding 1210 Vine Street and wanted to get this sent forward. They did send this initially into 311, and that was, I think, towards the end of last month, and the, the issue still hasn't been resolved. So it's regards, regards to a street sign, I believe a permit parking sign that's in the front of that property. They said that University of Scranton students stole the permit parking sign off of the post in front of the address a few months ago, and now there's, there's no nearby sign so that people know that it's permit parking. And so people are constantly parking there and receiving tickets or fines for parking in a permit parking spot, but without a sign to designate that it's, that it's permit parking. And so I'd, I'd like to get DPW on that as, as quick as possible in order to have the sign placed there.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And I also, this is a previous complaint for South Washington Avenue. There were trailers, empty trailers, that were, that were being parked there. And I think it was resolved for a little while, but they, they've started up again. I think there was at least one parked there. So I'd like to see if, if SPD could head down South Washington Avenue and, and make sure that the trailers aren't getting parked there.
I'll reach out to the traffic officer.
Okay. And we did get, finally, we'd been receiving complaints for a while about, I believe it was the 400 of East Gibson Street behind Cooper's or along the side of it, where there was a vacant trailer parked there, and that was finally cleared up, which, which I was really happy to hear. And I know there was a lot of overgrowth over the, like, warmer months onto the sidewalk there. So hopefully we can get whoever's property owner there to, to stay in compliance once, once the spring comes along. And I also wanted to revisit Burt Street and the repaving that needs to happen there. I've, I've gone down it a number of times, and sometimes I forget about the, about the large bumps that are there. And thankfully, my car's, you know, old enough that I don't care as much, but someone else might, but they, they don't want to damage their car with those. So I know that we, when we initially spoke with them, well, I mean, we've been speaking with them for years now about this, about Burt Street and the whole project. But they were going to try to get it done in the fall time. We even went out there and met with them, and then that didn't happen before the cold weather. And now spring is around the corner, so I want to make sure that that's on the list and that's finally going, going to get done. And lastly, just wanted to touch on the recycling pickup issue at, at the local bars. And lastly, just wanted to touch on the recycling pickup issue at the local bars. I would also like to see us be able to resume that, but, you know, at a cost, so that the city's not doing it for free. I'd hate to see all those recyclables just end up in the regular trash. I really would like to see them get recycled properly, and so if the city's able to offer that service, I'd like to find a way that we'd be able to do that. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew?
Yes, I have two. So a few weeks ago, I requested some type of verification, a change in policy, and something in writing from the city treasurer regarding permanent exoneration, for the example that I brought forward, for a person that owns a double and lives on one side and has not rented the other side for 20 years. So we were told that a permanent exoneration for that, the owner would need to pull, you know, the power meter and confirm permanent vacancy via the city inspector. So I had a big problem with that, I'd never heard of it before, and we expressed, I expressed my concerns, you know, you have to have some power in a vacant, you know, even if you own it and you live next door to it, there's weather issues. So did we ever get any information back to them, questions that I posed, or any response?
Our city treasurer advised us that the director of licensing and inspection will prepare the written statement and send it to us. He's out of the office till tomorrow.
All right, well, let's remind them...
And I'm following up with them.
Thank you, it's been a couple of weeks, all right? So I also received questions and concerns from residents about the flagpole at Naught Park. The flag is no longer visible because of tree growth. So, Mr. Voldenberg, would you please send correspondence over to Parks and Rec and have them look into correcting this? The residents, or at least have a look at it. The residents have said that the solution might be extending the flagpole versus, you know, trimming or cutting down trees. So please have the director of Parks and Rec do some type of assessment and get back to us, all right?
I will, sir.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. One of the things I'd like to mention, we had an individual come up and speak tonight who lives in Wilkes-Barre, who indicated if people got off of the train and came to Scranton, there would be nothing for them to do. Well, I grew up in Scranton and lived here my whole life, and there was nothing for us to do when I was 15 or 20 years old. Since that time, I'm going to give you a list of some of the things that you can do in the city of Scranton, including, we now have Rails to Trails, we have an aquarium down at the Steamtown Mall, we have Steamtown National Historic Site, since we like trains, a Trolley Museum, we have Scranton Public Library, as mentioned earlier, Scranton Cultural Center, where you can see all kinds of Broadway shows, Naught Park with the beautiful gorge and, you know, a treehouse, and you can walk out and look at the gorge, that's ADA accessible, McDade Park, we have Everheart Museum, we have Montage Ski Resort, the Toyota Pavilion for concerts, we have the Yankees Rail Riders AAA Baseball downtown, we have coffee shops, there's probably at least five or six of them, which never existed till several years ago. We have Thai restaurants, Japanese restaurants, Lebanese restaurants, Indian restaurants, Italian, American, Houdini Museum over in West Side, we have five colleges, including a medical college. So to say that there's nothing to do in the city of Scranton, that means that you're not trying and you're not looking. I believe there's a lot going on in the city of Scranton, and sometimes we tend to be our own worst enemy, and we, you know, it's easy, we are not perfect, we are far from it. Our goal is to try to constantly improve it, and many of the things that the citizens bring to us, they point things out, and I take notes, and all the council individuals take notes, and we value that input, and we do our best to try to look into things, because we can't think of everything, and I really do value the input that we get from the citizens that come and speak here. But I want to be a champion for this city, and I'm positive about the future of this city, and I think that sometimes we don't realize all the great things that happen in this city, and Mrs. Hordowan has mentioned in the past, and I couldn't agree with her more. One of the greatest things about this city are the people. And as the race director for the Steamtown Marathon for 25 years, who meet people coming here from 40 some different states in several countries, they talk about the people, how well they're treated, they feel like they're world-class when they come here, and they love being in this city, and they think, wow, what a beautiful, the architecture and the way that the people treat them. So I just, I wanted to stick up for the city of Scranton, I felt that needed to be said tonight, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Resolution, appointment of Scott Petroface, who resides in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the position of Director of the Department of Public Works effective February 6, 2023.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Second?
On the question.
Sorry, on the question, it was brought up in public comment tonight about the date here of effective February 6, but it's coming in front of council on the 21st. I'm happy to see this is coming in front of council. I'd also like, Frank, if we could reach out to see if our engineering project coordinator is also going to be coming in front of council, I'd love to see the resume and engineering background for that position. I know it's something that was added to the budget this year, but I'd like to see if the administration plans on bringing it before us.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
On the question, I agree, I think that historically we've seen this happen with these positions, that they come down to us later than after the person is actually hired and starting the position, so I would also like to see the legislation and the resumes come down sooner than that, so that we could, so that we could vote in advance of that person, starting with the position. But I did want to welcome Mr. Petroface to the position of DPW Director, and I really appreciated the list of accomplishments that he included. Must be very detail-oriented, because he included from every month the work that he had been doing there at DPW already in his former position. So I enjoyed seeing that, and I look forward to seeing what he does as Director.
I also have an issue with having appointments sent down to us weeks, sometimes a month or two later. It's just unsettling, because we actually had to ask for it last week, and I actually had to be brought up here, asking for this appointment to be brought down to us. That shouldn't be the norm, and it's getting that way, so I have a concern, too.
On the question, I also agree with that, and I did, in my meeting with the mayor, remind her that we had a memorandum of understanding, which was signed in March of 2022, that indicated that these appointments for these supervisory positions needed to be approved for council before they began. I understand Mr. Petroface actually worked for DPW prior to this, but still, I would like to see us follow the proper protocol and not be doing this posthaste. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the city of Scranton's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $975,000 to be used by the Scranton Life Realty Company, Inc., for the project to be named the Biden Street Historic Renovation.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
Second?
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the city of Scranton's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $1 million to be used for the Johnson College New and Enhanced Technical Training Facilities Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
Second?
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the city of Scranton's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $2 million to be used by Electric City Development LLC for the project to be named the 1100 Penn Avenue Development.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
Second?
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the city of Scranton's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $10 million to be used for Scranton School District for the project to be named the West Scranton Intermediate School Renovation Project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
Second?
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 204, 2023, reappointment of Robert Gatton Jr. as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Robert Gatton Jr.'s five-year term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire February 15, 2028.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second?
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, previously tabled for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 194, 2023, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a Eating Place Liquor License E 2760, currently owned by Sulker, Inc., and located at 622 South Blakely Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18510, to Green Ridge News LLC, located at 329 Green Ridge Street, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, 18509, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second?
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, Resolution Number 194, 2023.
If there is no further residence, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.